Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The regular board meeting of the governing board of trustees of Roman Land School District is called to order at 5:30 PM. A roll call, Mr. Speller. Mr. Reller.
Here.
Mr. Sperry is, I will be joining us shortly. Mrs. Clykes?
Here.
Mr. Gary?
Here.
And myself, Ms. Moon is here. Do we have any public comments for this evening, Nikki?
We do not have any public comments for closed session.
Excellent. Then closed session is called at 5:31 PM to discuss public employees.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't have a lot of time if you couldn't.
And can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome, David. Oh, it looks like he's connecting.
Hey, David.
Okay, it works up there. Figure this out, man. This is terrible. How you all doing?
Good. How are you doing?
I don't think your mic's working. You're unmuted.
I, I know. I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you. I think he's messing with you.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Got your earplugs on? Good. Okay.
Okay, Debbie. I'm not gonna say anything.
These are the new Zoom jokes, huh?
That's, I'm crying.
Mr. Butler, are we streaming?
We are streaming right now. We officially reopened the meeting yet.
Oh.
You're gonna give me a heads up when we open, right?
Well, it's live. We're just waiting for everybody to get in.
Oh. And we'll be quiet.
All right, it looks like we have everybody, so as soon as it hits 6:30, you can go ahead and start it back up.
Okay. My computer says it's 6:29, so in a minute. Okay. The regular board meeting of Romaland School District reconvenes at 6:30 PM. Manny, was there any action in closed session?
No actions taken.
Thank you. We're gonna stay the Pledge of Allegiance now. And I'll begin. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna review our governance norms. We agree to act with dignity, respect differences, build trust, work as a team, engage the public, focus on the success of every student, and work together for the common good. Communications for the governing board and superintendent. I'm, Mr. Geary. Any reports?
Nothing to report.
Mrs. Clyts?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Reller?
Nothing to report.
And Mr. Sperry?
I have nothing.
And for myself, nothing to report. Mr. Peyton, would you like to review the superintendent's report?
We'll continue with the theme. There's no report this evening since this is more of a special board meeting.
Thank you. So now we are moving on to public comments. Members of the audience are invited to address the board at this time on each agenda or non-agenda item. The Ralph M. Brown Act, and in accordance with the board policy 9323, limits the governing board and staff's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. If appropriate, the board may direct the superintendent to follow up on topics brought up in public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and 20 minutes per topic. All requests to address the Board of Trustees must be submitted on the Request to Address the Board of Trustees Google form prior to 4:00 PM. The regular board meeting open session is scheduled to begin at 6:30. Ms. Saxton, do we have any public comments?
We do. The first one was submitted by Rebecca Moya, a Harvest Valley parent. And her comment reads, "I have three kids in school currently in kinder, first, and second grade. So as you probably can figure out, I'm having to split my time with each child in teaching or even doing their online work for them to turn in each assignment, because how is a kinder supposed to know how to work a computer by themselves? It's impossible. Some children aren't as lucky to have their parent home teaching them, so that's my concern, not just for my own children, but all of the children that aren't getting the proper instructions. Another thing is the internet connection. Even though I was provided a hotspot, my children get kicked offline about six times per day, and that means I stop what I'm doing and constantly having internet connection issues. I have made changes in my phone carrier as well, so I can connect my children to separate devices, because even with a better antenna or switching to a more expensive phone plan, this online learning has just been so hard for me and my family. I am sure I'm not the only one having this problem, but I choose to speak up about the issues and how it's affecting my family. I get responses that there is not much we can do because you live in the area with no reception and have communication with the teachers, but when my child is getting cut off while the teacher is teaching, it is frustrating to my child, and she gets behind in the time that I take reconnecting each time. I have switched out my hotspot about five times, and by now it's time-consuming. I know it's out of our hands, but it's so outrageous that I'm having to do work all day up till super late because our internet crashes, so the kids are up a little later than they should, by which by now they aren't happy about school. They're more like, will the internet work today, or will I have to sit 10 minutes while my mom has to fix it every 20 minutes? So I hope you take all I have said in consideration in your meeting today. Thank you. Sincerely, Rebecca Moya." The second comment that was submitted was submitted by Colette Reyes, a Harvest Valley teacher, and she shared that she submits the comment on behalf of the second grade team. The comment reads, "Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to address our district about technology, more specifically about the teachers' technology. At this point, all teachers are being required to teach virtually, but not all teachers have the same equipment. This is not equitable. Teachers are having to use outdated dot cams and MacBooks because they were told they are not eligible for an upgrade yet, or some teachers are using their own personal computers just to teach and see students at the same time. These issues need to be addressed. All teachers should have the same computers, updated Chromebooks, a second screen to view students while presenting work, and updated document cameras. I know the district is planning on having teachers and students return to campus, but let's be real here. We all know that this will probably be temporary, and teachers and students will be virtual teaching and learning once again. In order for teachers to teach and reach every student, teachers need to have equipment that works. Let me walk you through the process of the struggles of using old equipment. Hopefully, you are able to download Google Meets. Some districts, given iPads are obsolete and unable to meet the ISO standards. Then you must manually log into the meeting room as a second person, or if you purchase the iPad you have, you have to log into Romo Guest. And this is another process. Often they crash or lose connections during the meeting, which requires you to re-enter the Google Meet meeting code. Teachers also struggle presenting material and seeing their students at the same time. Teachers have to toggle between tabs showing the presented material and their students, and this has been kicking teachers out of the Meet and leave students unattended in the Meet. Teachers should not have to use personal equipment to effectively do their job. Every teacher needs a dot cam and a second screen to display material and see students at the same time without toggling. If a teacher is without a dot cam, they are presenting material to students via the camera, and students are having a difficult time viewing the material. Our time is limited, and we are having too many techn- technology issues. Students are having a hard time focusing because of all the, of the technology problems and lots of lag time on the student's side. These known issues are in my grade level at my site. Please reach out to your teachers. I know we are not alone. And that concludes the comments for this evening."
Mr. Peyton, can you follow up on those comments?
Yes, Ms. Moon, on both. We'll have follow-up phone calls tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Moon, can I just add to that?
Yes.
I'm concerned about the comment that the teachers are using their personal devices. My understanding, over the last few years, we've invested a lot of resources in technology, and teachers were given opportunities to choose their own type of technology. So if we could also get some information on that as well.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Reller.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, if there's no other comments, to Employee Association Report. Do we have any association reports, Mr. Murray?
We do. We actually have one report. It's a joint report from both the associations. So you ready for me?
I am ready.
This comes from Ramona Massey, CSA president, and Mary Wigman, RTA president. And it begins, "Good evening, board members, Mr. Peyton and cabinet members. Both union associations would like to thank Mr. Peyton, John Murray, and Michelle Weiss for including the union presidents in many committees and the numerous discussions in regards to COVID-19. Discussions and committees have been in regards to the school closure, as well as districts, district business pertaining to the ending, the previous school year, summer school, and most recently, the discussions to reopen classrooms for the 2021 school year. Both associations understand the need to get students physically back into the classroom. As you will hear tonight, there's a proposal that has been shared with both of the associations to open schools in phases. We support the concept of slowly and cautiously opening in phases. By approaching the strategic method, our hope is to apply all the procedures that the safety committees have been working so hard to outline for our district. As the closing of our schools decision was based on health and safety for our community, the reopening of the campuses must follow the same commitment. Procedures are still in the process of being developed by the committee to ensure the safety of all students, their family, and staff members. Conversations with both staff, or with staff from both associations, parents, and with our students during SEL virtual teaching time have been with the same understanding. The expectations that we have considered and will implement are precautionary measures for the safety of our students and staff. We owe them nothing less than what they are expecting. Until Riverside County is released by the Health Department, both associations commit to continue working collaboratively with the HR department to finalize and write up the safety protocols for all sites, schedule and ensure all staff are properly trained, as well as have procedures for all departments and classifications. The associations have recommended to include a mock run-through in those procedures at the sites. The associations have recommended to include a mock run-through in those procedures at the sites. The associations speak on behalf of all of our staff. We have to have consistent expectations that all must adhere to and will be in place and communicated to all stakeholders prior to opening our campuses. After the committees have defined and written up the procedures and protocols, there will be a collaborative negotiation session with both associations and the district to review our MOUs and revise and ratify if needed. We look forward to maneuvering cohesively in the implementation of these final steps to the phasing of safely opening our schools. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Murray. It's so nice to see our unions working so well with you, Mr. Peyton, and Ms. Weiss.
Absolutely. We really do appreciate their efforts.
Absolutely. It's great to see. Next is information items. COVID-19 update. Mr. Peyton, to introduce this item?
Thank you, Ms. Moon. This will provide some of the specifics that were alluded to in the public comments from both RTA and CSA. And so I'd like to kind of walk through some potential scenarios that may be developing over the next few months, and if I could ask Mr. Butler, thank you, Mr. Butler, to put this on the screen. So the board has seen the top half of this before. This is the blueprint for safer economy that California had instituted. And below is a little chart that I keep when data is updated every Tuesday. And so you will see that today, well, on August 31st, we were widespread. September 8th, we were widespread, but there was one area that fell into the substantial range. On September 15th, both areas of data fell into the substantial range, but you have to be there for two weeks. So technically, we were still in the widespread category. And then as of earlier today, the both data points are in the substantial category, which means after two weeks, Riverside County is now in the substantial category. And for for businesses in the economy, that means something different than schools, right? So I won't take the time to talk about the businesses in the economy, but what it means for schools is now we start a 14-day period. If we can maintain that level of of data, of good data for 14 days, then we could potentially be eligible to reopen our schools in Riverside County. And with that, I'd like to go to the next slide, Mr. Butler. Thank you. So again, same top, same same information at the top of the slide. You've seen the bottom of this before, and we've talked about as our economy opening opens, maybe gradually reopening our schools. And what I would like to do tonight is to potentially provide some specifics around that. And what is that, what are those three arrows on the bottom look like in Romoland School District? And of course, this is in collaboration with our bargaining units, and it's also contingent upon what we see on a weekly basis in the data. So, Mr. Butler, would you advance to the next slide? So starting, right now, we're in at October, excuse me, September 22nd. Last Monday, we began starting issuing one-to-one assessments for students in need, and we started issuing those in person at the district office. And that's been very successful, of course, adhering to all safety standards and cleaning protocols as as people are coming in and exiting our building. Those one-to-one assessments continue this week. And then, starting next week, you'll start to see a gradual layering in of more students and bodies on our campuses. So, and this has been done through our our school reopening committee, and they've had two meetings so far, and they're they still have some here in the next week or so. And so, beginning next week, we layer in what we call contracted services. And at this time, and I want to ask Ms. Weiss to provide some more details about what that committee talked about with these contracted services.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton. Contracted services for students who have IEPs, so students with disabilities, who receive services such as physical therapy, behavioral support from what's known as a BCBA therapist, occupational therapy, adaptive PE, operations and mobility, and vision impairment therapy. So there's different therapists that we contract with. Some are outside agencies that are private, you know, contractors. Others are through Riverside County Office of Education. So starting next week, the physical therapist and the BCBA for behavior support will be giving services to the students who receive those, and that will be on our campuses. And that can be done in small group, but most of those services are actually one-to-one at this point. And then we'll be layering in the RCOE, Riverside County Office of Education, contract providers. Hopefully, the following week, they're finishing up an MOU process with Riverside County Office of Education to be able to layer in the occupational therapy, adaptive PE, operations and mobility, and the vision impairment therapist. Are there any questions about those contracted providers?
So hopefully, as I progress through this, you'll see a progression, but not going too fast. One of the one of the scenarios that we don't want is we don't want families flip-flopping back and forth between in-person and having to go virtual. And so we've seen some of the challenges with opening up too fast. So as we do our one-to-one assessments into our second week this week, and we start to bring contracted services on for a two-week period near the end of September and the beginning of October. And then, Mr. Butler, would you mind advancing to the next slide? So then you can see a progression beyond those contracted services, starting October 12th, where we would identify students with very specific acute learning needs in the area of speech services. It's not every student receiving speech services, but there are some students receiving speech services that have very acute learning needs that are challenging to do virtually. And so that would be our next layer of bringing those people in for a week, those students in for a week. And then, if you'll look at the following week of October 19th, we've added another, and this is a more general category, where we call this other targeted services. And really, at that point, our committee is still working on criteria for what does that mean for those other targeted services? But they're basically different groups of students with, and I'll use the term acute learning needs again, so our more severe specialized learning needs students. And that committee will identify those groups, and we would service those students over a two-week period. Of course, so this is the gradual repopulation of our campuses. Of course, all of these times, we have to be very attentive to both countywide data, so we get weekly reports on that. But we also have to be very in tune to what we're seeing in Romoland School District as well. And so those are both things. So at any time, we could pull back and or advance according to the schedule or slow down based on what the data is telling us at the time. And so before I start talking about those green boxes at the bottom, I'll pause just for a second for any comments or questions on that progression that I just described through October 30th.
I have a question. Real quick, on on the progression, you know, going through these different stages. So we have a 21, we're in the midst of this now, this 21-day improvement period, correct? Am I looking at that correctly?
So it's it's a little bit confusing. Mr. Butler, can I ask you to go back to that blueprint for the economy? So so where we're at right now is we, this isn't, these are days for the economy, so you cannot progress. You can go from widespread to substantial in 14 days, but then all the subsequent phases, you have to stay at for 21 days.
Okay, that, okay, I understand.
That's for the economy, but for schools, it's different. We have to be in this substantial range for 14 before we could potentially open up.
Okay, so we're in this 21-day period, the first two weeks, everything's going great. Everyone's, everything's improving, and on the third week, we have a little bit of a backslide, but yet not enough to go back to the other color. Will that set us back, or will we be able to keep progressing? Do you have an answer for that? I don't know.
Trevor, you're music.
Sorry about that. Mr. Butler, would you mind going back to the slide where we left off? So in any of these weeks, so we're operating through October 30th under what they call small group guidance. And so we're able to operate small group guidance right now, no matter which of those four phases that we're in. So if we were to go back, let's say we're substantial right now, and the county went back to widespread, by the state guidelines, we could still operate these small groups that I just reviewed with you. Of course, if we have an outbreak in our district, that might cause us to pull back on those services.
I understand that. We talked about that.
Yeah. So now, once we get to November 2nd, if we're seeing positive data through the month of October, and and we're not seeing an outbreak in cases from the small groups on our campuses, then we need to really start working with, and well, not start working, we've been working with our bargaining units all along. But in looking at our calendar, you'll notice down here where that first green box is, November 2nd is the beginning of a trimester. So that's a natural breaking point, where if the data is still trending in the right way, we could consider bringing some larger groups of students back. And what I would say with that is we could consider bringing our hybrid and/or our traditional students back, but in a hybrid model, where only half of the kids are on campus two days a week. And it, we don't, so there's a couple of things we would still need to work through, through through our conversations, and that would be, if the data is all good, do we stagger? So right now, we have a group of kids that have signed up for virtual learning. They would stay virtual 100% of the time. We have a group of kids that signed up for a hybrid model, and that might be a group that we could consider bringing in on November 2nd. We could consider bringing the traditional students back in a hybrid model at that same time, or we could choose to stagger that out a few more weeks, based on the data that we're seeing. So it's possible where we could use a phased-in approach, where maybe we bring in, let's say, the hybrid model on the second, and we wait two more weeks for the traditional students to come back in a hybrid model. And and I'll show that by Vince, if you could go to the next slide. So that's why I gave that three, those kind of three weeks where there's green boxes. That's kind of a window that we're operating in, but it's projecting a little far out because, you know, the data changes daily and weekly in terms of COVID, right? So it's kind of a real tentative, rough outline. But you will see, once we get into November, we have a week off for Thanksgiving. And then I won't go beyond this slide in terms of calendar, but I will say, when we come back from Thanksgiving, we're back for about three weeks, and then kids are off for three weeks for winter break. And we do know that there, during those long breaks, there's, you know, of course, we'll have county data at that time. We'll see what the trends are for COVID. But there also is the potential where, on those breaks, we have people interacting with extended family and things of that nature. So that's something we really have to be careful about as we approach Thanksgiving and winter break. And so kind of our proposal would be to really, once we get to November in that three-week window, decide how we could be, bring students back in a hybrid model, whether that be phased in over those three weeks, and maybe even then continue in that hybrid model after Thanksgiving break through winter break. And then we kind of see where we're at at that point, and then we make determinations for what does it look like after winter break. And with that, I'll stop and pause there on that part, because now that's, that will be technically, we would be reopening school when we start talking about these green boxes. And so I'll
I have a question, Trevor. Mr. Peyton, you talked a little bit about the kids that were signed up for the hybrid and the kids that were beyond that. You know, so we have our virtual and our hybrid, and then the kids that, you know, the parents that want them to come back full-time. You talked about that separation of about two weeks. Can you talk a little bit more about why not bring them all back at the same time? Like, what are some complications with doing that?
So that that's been something we've been debating and talking about and talking through. I think we need to have some more conversations around that. Really, what it comes down to is we want to potentially bring back, let's say, one of those groups for a period of two weeks and make sure that we are, our pre-screening processes are flush, we'll have a higher volume of kids coming into campus on a on a daily basis. We're not sure exactly sure how long it's going to take to get those kids in until they actually show up on that pre-screening process. But also, it limits, if there is an outbreak, it's a smaller group of students at that point. And what it will do is it will give us a couple of week window to see how we're doing, if we're having to exclude students or staff, and and what and what numbers are we having to do that? Because that may inform, well, it will inform, it'll inform one way or the other. It's either going to inform that, yes, we're good to go to the next step and maybe bring that next block of students back in a traditional manner, or it may inform that that there's too many outbreaks right now in that next group, and maybe everybody potentially go back to virtual.
Well, I I appreciate that explanation, because I think maybe parents might have that same question. I'd rather err on the side of caution, and like you had said, just let's go slow and steady. Let's weed our kids in, and let's see how we do with it, so that we build a strong base.
It it would be, and we've had this conversation, it would be very disruptive to bring everybody, and then, you know, three or four days later, have to send everybody home and close a school down. You know, it it interrupts, your families have had to alter their schedules, we know that. And then if they're then going back and altering their schedules, but then four days later, we're having to shut down a school and send them back, that could be more disruptive than doing a gradual approach as as proposed here. And then, if there are no more questions on that topic, I would like to review some of the criteria about when we have to consider shutting down schools and classrooms based on guidance from Riverside County Public Health and the California Department of Public Health. So, Mr. Butler.
Hey, Trevor, I have one question. The assessments on the, in the first week, it, are those the, what assessments are those again?
Ms. Weiss, would you like to explain your one-to-one assessments that you have been administering?
Absolutely. Psychoeducational assessments for determining qualification for special education services and components of those, not just done by the school psychologists, but also speech teachers and our district nurse for the health component of those assessments. We also have some early childhood assessments being done in the early childhood office. And with the one-to-one assessment guidance from our state and county, we've also been able to have it as an option for any English learners who need their LPAC assessment. able to have it as an option for any English learners who need their LPAC assessment in person.
Mr. Reller, did that answer your question?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you.
So just to review, and the reason for the caution and the progression of going slow more so to go fast is this. So what is the criteria of when we do reopen for having to close a school? And there's a couple of different barometers that we'll have to be monitoring on a daily basis. If we have multiple cases in multiple cohorts at a school, and then for an elementary school setting, you could think of a cohort as a classroom. So if there's multiple cases and multiple classrooms, we would also make sure that we are consulting with the local health officer. But that would be a time where we would consider having to shut down a school. We may shut down a classroom if there's one student or somebody or a person in a classroom. There's the possibility that just an individual classroom could get shut down. But as soon as that starts to break out into multiple transmissions into multiple cohorts, then we have to have a conversation about shutting down the school. And that speaks to the, kind of the cumbersome approach of opening up for three or four days and having to shut back down again. We really want to see the trends that we're seeing as we slowly repopulate our schools. The other one is that if there is 5%, doesn't matter, teachers, students, staff, that are contracting COVID over a 14-day period. And so that is another monitoring piece that we have to engage in at the district office. And if we hit that 5% mark, that again, in consultation with our local health officer, we would then consider closing down the school. And the reason the consultation with the local health officer is so important is, he has a broader spectrum of current cases across the county and where hotspots may be occurring. We'll know what's happening inside of our schools, but he may have a broader perspective that would help inform our decisions. And typically, if we have to close down a school or even a classroom, they're typically closed down for 14 days. And then, of course, cleaning and disinfecting would occur, but that's going to be happening daily anyway. But they would basically be typically shut down for 14 days, and then we could revisit bringing them back if that was something that needed to happen. And then the next one is when districts would need to shut down. So there is guidance on when to close a district. And so in this guidance, it talks about 25% or more of the schools, if they have closed, then the district really should shut down. And for us, that would mean if we closed one school, we wouldn't be hitting the 25% mark, right? But if we had to close a second school, then we would have to consider shutting down the entire district at that time. So it doesn't take long to get there, two schools for us. And so, and again, typically that is for a 14-day period and in consultation with the local public health department. So the measures and the guidance for closing schools are, it doesn't take much, but that's because we want, we wouldn't want widespread occurrences happening on campus. And that really lends itself to that slow progression of repopulating our schools as we see where we're at. And of course, if we're not seeing any red flags, that's great. But if we start to see red flags, that may cause us to pull back and extend timelines or make adjustments along the way. Any questions or comments? Okay, well, with that, then I'm done. Then we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Peyton. That was very informative. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Do any board members have comments or questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Geary?
Aye.
Mrs. Clyte?
Aye.
Mr. Reller?
Aye.
Mr. Sperry?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Next on the agenda is action items, learning continuity and attendance plan 2021. And Ms. Wise, to explain this item?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Moon. At the last board meeting earlier this month, we had a public hearing for our learning continuity and attendance plan, and I presented the key items and sections along with other directors in the district. We're sharing the contents of that plan. This item tonight is a vote for deciding on approval of that plan for 2020, 2021.
Thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
And all in favor, Mr. Geary?
I have a, sorry, Debbie, I couldn't get to my unmute button. I just have a couple of questions. Ms. Wise, can you tell me a little bit about the online tutoring?
Absolutely. So the FEV online tutoring service is a service that will do virtual tutoring for our students. And if all, we are engaging in purchasing enough for every student to be able to engage if their parents and guardians would like a student to receive that support. It's done online and the student is assigned a tutor. And so we know that this is not a replacement to the quality instruction our kids are getting in whole groups, small group and one-on-one with their classroom teachers. But this is additional in the evening, could be homework help, classroom help, help or tutoring for a need that a student has. This service, FEV, is reputable and has been used by area districts. And we had a committee come together of mixed stakeholders to give input on whether it be worthwhile to pursue. We're excited to be sharing about the service at the same time that our progress reports will be going home to families in the coming weeks. So we're co-mingling that message at the same time to let people know like, hey, here's a progress report. And of course, you have access to reaching out to the teacher, to answer questions and to give your child support. And we also have this additional service for our students.
Please tell me, if I'm a student, how do I access this and how exactly does it work?
I really wish I had Ms. Drew here at the moment to answer all that, and I apologize for that. I will get you that exact information, but we'll, again, we have our intro or launch meeting for that tomorrow with the service. And I will have those details that I can put together for you in an update, and we'll be advertising all those unique details to families in the coming weeks.
And the reason why?
I could add a few specifics to that, Mr. Reller. So there's a couple of different ways. So there might be this, let's say, math homework, right? And a student might be doing math homework in the evening and encounter a problem that they don't know how to solve. And maybe their parent, if they're like me, and my kid's in high school and I, you know, their math problems are getting more and more complex and challenging me, right? And so maybe the parent is unable to provide the assistance. That student could very quickly log into this program, and it's really a digital whiteboard. They could literally put that problem on the digital whiteboard and a tutor would, would pop up and help them work through the steps in that problem. So that's one way that it can be used. Another way that it could be used is if there's a student that is needing consistent support, they could schedule a tutor for like a weekly session for that particular student and that particular tutor, and they could address whatever challenges that student may be facing in that week.
Is, are these tutors also bilingual?
Yes, they are. There are multiple languages available for our students.
And what, what does our contract with them say with respect to wait time for a student to have a tutor pop up and help them?
I understand it to be pretty immediate. Yes.
Okay, do we, do we have any?
Of the same tutor as much as possible with a student is also done for building that relationship.
And the reason why I ask that question is, the tutoring service that you chose is quite expensive. So I'm, I hope there's a lot of great service and the amount of money that we're spending on it, the turnaround time when a, when a child asks for a tutor should not be very long. You're right. I think it should be instantaneous almost, but we're not the only district in the, in the country that is probably contracting to this company. And so that's why I was just questioning, you know, if a, if a student has to wait over five minutes to get a tutor, that student's probably going to get off that program and not actually get the tutoring. So that's why I just asked if there was a guaranteed time, wait time in the contract with the company. But, but I do like having and access for kids to have a tutor. And I understand that it probably communicates via the chat versus a face-to-face visual of that tutor. And I'm sure the tutor cannot see the student. I would be, I would be concerned about that. And last question, which I'm sure I know the answer. Every one of these tutors has to go through a screening process, just like a teacher does, or instructional aid does, or anyone, anybody working with kids.
Yes, of course, for like safety, absolutely, absolutely. And I also wanted to share one other component that we negotiated in the contract was that the, any unused hours for this year will roll over into next year, into the next school year, which is important. We're investing in a lot of hours, and if they're not all used, they'll be available to our students next year.
Okay, so it's a, an hour, a total number of hours we're purchasing from this organization? It's not just a length of time?
Ultimately, we invested in one hour per student, and not all our students might access it this year, and some might need two hours, more than one hour, right? We're not keeping track of by student hours. We'll get reports of data of how much time is used. The good news is the data is prorated. If you only use four minutes, you know, that's only, as a student, only four minutes is coming off our total purchase, you know, each time.
And I'd say also, because this is a new service for us, so we've vetted several different companies. And actually, there are about four different districts in Riverside County that have used this service prior to the COVID break, right? For, maybe they used it for English learners or a specific targeted group, and the reviews have come back with the districts raving about the support for this company. So we did do some reference checking on that as well.
Okay. Last question, Ms. Wise. In the column that says contributing, what does that mean? There's some yeses, some no's. What does that mean?
Okay, the contributing to increased services and such, that is the crossover, if you will, with the LCAP plan as we normally know it. So this is not a regular LCAP. Sadly, it has the same acronym, LCAP, for learning continuity and attendance plan, just like a local control and accountability plans. It's somewhat confusing out there, but this is not an LCAP. However, we are to show how we are increasing or improving services for our students. So anything marked with a yes as increasing or improving services is something new and something very particular to this COVID environment and this school year. Those would be marked as a yes. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing that. I think it's an excellent resource. So any additional comments or questions? Okay, did I already get a motion to approve in a second? I think we did. So all in favor, Mr. Geary?
Aye.
Mrs. Clyte?
Aye.
Mr. Reller?
Aye.
Mr. Sperry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. L2, California School Services Association Memorandum of Understanding COVID-19. Mr. Murray, to explain this item?
Yes, the MOU outlines details of the district's return to school for the 2021 school year as it relates to our classified staff who are represented by CSCE.
Well, okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to?
Sorry. Again, I was reading the MOU a little bit further, and then I couldn't find the mute button. It says in the MOU that we will hire auxiliary personnel for the isolation room when that time might arise. Is that a, I would assume that's not going to be a permanent position, but is that something that we are going to be able to find out of the LCAP?
You know, we have resources that are separate from the, that are devoted specifically to COVID funding that we're initially going to use. So that's the initial intent for those, and they are not permanent positions. They're going to be short-term. So we can separate our health clerks from the alternative assignment. So kids can be up for medications, would not necessarily be in the same room as a student who's up there because of, you know, symptoms related to potentially COVID.
Okay, thank you.
And that would come out of the CARES Act, John?
Correct.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
And all in favor, Mr. Geary?
Aye.
Mrs. Clyte?
Aye.
Mr. Reller?
Aye.
Mr. Sperry?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Moon, aye. There is no closed session, so the regular board meeting of Romoland School District reconvenes, or it doesn't, it ends at 7:18. Oh, no, I'm take that back. Any closing comments from the board members? Mr. Geary?
No closing comments.
And Mrs. Clyte?
No closing comments.
Mr. Reller?
None, thank you.
And Mr. Sperry?
None.
And none for myself. So our regular board meeting is now adjourned at 7:18 PM.